Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business, and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply, as cautioned, shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to welcome you to the city council's special meeting September 18, 2025 at 5:30. I'll call this meeting to order. We're going to have a moment of silence for our invocation. Please bow your heads. Thank you very much. City manager?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. The purpose of this special meeting is to conduct the second and final public hearing for the FY 2026 City of Titusville Annual Operating Budget. Similar to our first public hearing, we'll have a short presentation by our finance director, followed by a reading of the ordinances by our city attorney, and then voting on each ordinance and holding a public hearing on each ordinance. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our finance director.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. As the city manager stated, this is our second and final FY 26 annual budget hearing, and I'm just going to jump right in. As in the first public hearing, I'm going to kind of lay out the order of which things have to be done. The city council must adopt the millage rate before it adopts any of the budgets for tonight. And also, the public may speak and ask questions before the city council adopts any of the proposed budget-related ordinances.
I hope you're not waiting on me, Ms. Terry.
We're waiting on the slide.
Okay.
The clicker might need a battery. There we go. Too far. Go back. Okay. So just a little bit of a recap that the tentative budget was proposed on July 22 of this year, and it had a millage rate of 6.300 mils. Also, there was a workshop that was held on August 7 at 5 o'clock, where you all were presented the initial budget. The city manager proposed a reduction in the millage rate to 6.3 mils. And the first public hearing was held last week on September 11, and this is the second and final public hearing. So tonight, we're going to have five different ordinances. So there's five different votes that you will take tonight. Three of them are related to the budget, and two of them are related to the rates for water and sewer and solid waste.
We'll be adding some more remotes to our next budget. You better know technician.
Go ahead. Okay, go to the next one. There we go. Okay, so now I think we're back. So you'll be familiar with this. This is the entire city budget. There is a net change of $173,137 from last week's budget. We had brought to you those two changes that we were going to make, and so this represents those two changes. As you can see here, charges for services is the main part of the revenues that the city gets citywide. The next pie chart is for the expenditure citywide. Same thing, as you'll see, it's broken down. This one really didn't change from last time. It's a small change that we made, and so the percentages didn't change from the last meeting. And so this is the page that I have to read all the words on. So this is per Florida statutes. The city of Titusville, Florida is the taxing authority. 6.1938 is the rolled back millage rate. The operating millage rate, to be levied, is 6.300 mils. The percent of increase over the rolled back millage rate is 1.71%, which is considered a tax increase. Again, this budget was built on a 6.3 mils. It complies with the 10% cap on prior year revenue in accordance with the 74/430 Florida law. And if you're familiar, that law is specific to Brevard County. During the public hearing, city council must discuss the percentage of increase over the rolled back millage rate, if any, and to fund the general fund budget and the purpose for which the Advalorum tax revenues are being increased. They also need to hear public comments regarding the increase in the Advalorum revenues and the millage rate. So the fiscal year 26 budget, as I said, is a 6.300 mils, 1.71% above the rolled back millage rate of 6.1938. It generates $878,669 of additional revenue over the FY '25 adopted budget for Advalorum. The purpose of this increase is to fund a 3.0% COLA. It is to fund public safety technology, vehicles, and equipment, and is to fund the cost of consumables due to inflationary pressure. This is a slide of the general fund only, and you can see that in the general fund that the Advalorum property taxes make up 36% of the general fund budget, which is by far the largest part. The other part is going to be intergovernmental and utility taxes, and we call those shared revenues. On the expenditure side, you can see that 44% of the expenditure side of the general fund budget is made up by public safety. The next slide is the per capita for the resident of Advalorum. You can see that the city of Titusville does a very good job of keeping that on the... Hello?
Oh.
I believe we could be back on. Don't jinx it.
Hello? Okay.
Curtis', livestream back up?
Livestream's been up. We've just been frozen on that right now.
Okay. Thank you. I was just hearing you. All right, Ms. Terry.
Are we ready?
Do you have the floor still?
Okay, thank you, sir. So this is the general fund, millage comparisons to the county and the other cities, and you can see that we're relatively in the middle. We do a good job of holding that per capita number down, and we are in the middle as far as the actual millage rate goes. The next slide is the tax house. This is what breaks it down. The tax house is very clear to me that we do a good job with that part of it as well. We use this based on a house that has a $260,780 assessed value. The exemption is $50,722 and a $25,000 home sit exemption for the school board. So the next ones are all the rate changes. You've seen these before. These are the same rate changes, the same rates that were presented at the last meeting. I'm just going to go through them real quickly. They haven't changed. You can see that stormwater and solid waste on the first slide have their stated increases at 17.59 and 8% for solid waste. On the next slide, you can see that we have the stormwater rate comparison. You can see that Titusville is very close to being in the middle on both of those rates, so that you can see we're practically in the middle on both. The next one is the solid waste rate comparison. This one, we're very close to the bottom. You can see that those numbers are reflective there, and only Rockledge and Melbourne are lower than we are. And these do not include their new rates. These are the rates that we had before. Then we have the solid waste commercial. It's the dumpster four. You can see we're right in the middle on those rates as well. Then we're going to jump into the 3/4 inch meter. You can see this is the same exact rates that were before. I believe that these are both the water and sewer rates are a 5% increase over last year, so that's reflected in these charges. Then you have the typical commercial bill, which is also a 3/4 inch meter, and you can see that this is also based on 5,000 gallon volume. And then the last of the rate is the 1 inch meter, and you can see that the volume of this is 15,000 gallons, and that you can see these rates haven't changed since the last meeting as well. If you have any questions on the rates, Kevin's here to answer your questions. So we have the water and wastewater rate comparison. You can see here that we do a good job with this. We're fairly close to the lower end of the rates. And both of the rates that are listed there, again, this is not their updated rates. This is what their rates currently were at the time that this was put together. And then you can see on the combined utility rate for residential, again, we're towards the lower end on the rates, and it looks like it's 13560 as the average. And I'm going to pause right there in case you have any questions on any of these rate slides.
I did have a question about, you know, where we are. I know these rates are us comparing what we're looking at for next year versus where everybody else is currently this year. I would like to see, after everybody finalizes theirs, where we come back at. You know, maybe after the first of October or something like that, because I think that would be a good comparison to see how we're tracking, because I know next year, we're probably going to see the same thing, where they're currently are versus what we're proposing. So I think that'd be good information.
I think Kevin can do that for you.
Well, across millage rate, everything.
Okay. By the way, the millage rates in here are the other city's proposed millage rates. But I can get to what they actually adopted as well. They don't usually change, but I can get them for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to the action items. So we're going to do a couple of follow-ups. So we're going to adopt the millage rate of 6.300 mils. It generates $878,669 over last year's adopted budget for Advalorum. Any additions to the budget would require an additional equal or greater reduction or addition. If you wish to change the budget in either way, you would have to tell me what you want to add or what you want to take out. Or you have the option of making no changes at all to the budget.
I told her to read fast. I didn't know she was going to listen. Okay. We're on to the ordinances? Okay. Ordinance 27-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2026 and providing for an effective date. Are we going to do these one at a time? We're going to need to take a vote? What I would suggest is we need to deal with them one at a time. So after they're called, then I would go ahead and ask for public comment, motion, second, any discussion, and then we'll go on to the next.
All righty, sounds good. So you already read the ordinance for the record? Correct. All right, city clerk?
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
It's on. It's on there.
Your mic wasn't on at first.
Oh, is it?
They fixed it now.
Okay. Stan Johnston, and I've... I don't know if this is legal, but this is a sign. And it says, you know, you're going to walk the walk. You got to, you know, if you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk the walk. So this is from a shirt that I got from the Lynx Ministry. Some of y'all know the Lynx Ministry. Drive a bus, big bluebird bus, up to Smoky Mountains, and we'd have fun with a bunch of people. So this has to do with what we're talking about. You know, I'm talking about budgeting. I'm talking about money. And I sense, and in this case, there's a number of things that have not been included in the budget, which I object to. And there's been a number of poor decisions that have been made, and I'm asking for budgeting to be included of the training for the detection of sewer leakage and training for harmful spraying of people with sewage, to educate and train the council to obtain advice from the city, including our professional engineers. And you notice the sound back here, 176 parts per trillion. That's the measurement of forever chemicals that was in a sample of our drinking water, which is far above any acceptable level. And then we have also been asking for testing of the Indian River Lagoon for things that's not tested for at this time, toxins, pesticides, herbicides, metals, and so forth. Because I don't believe that the... It's just algae blooms that are killing everything. I believe that we've got poisons here, and I know we have poisons here. We have, when boats come by and they paint it and so forth, they have horrible metals and toxic chemicals that are associated with the coating of boats, especially, well, anyhow. So that's a problem. So on this, number 27, is I'm opposed to it. And I've... I really tried hard to stay within the constraints of what I'm supposed to... what I'm allowed to say. And I'm going to be wearing, not only this, I'm going to wear a sign. And if I'm not allowed to wear this sign, then let me know, so I can put it down. So I'll be doing that in the next... I'm going to go to 28. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so any other cards? No other cards. Council discussion on the millage rate, member Nelson?
Discussion or motion?
Well, you can make a motion at any time.
Move to approve ordinance number 27-2025, providing for the millage for the operation of the city for 2026 with a proposed millage rate of 6.300, which is 1.71% increase over the rollback of 6.1938.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? City attorney, did you have something?
No, I'm sorry. I was just getting ready for the next ordinance.
Okay, thank you. City clerk?
Yes, sir. Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City attorney?
Ordinance 28-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2026 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City clerk?
One card, it's Dan Johnston.
So, mayor, the rules are you are not allowed to wear or have signs up. I think by wearing them, you violate the spirit of that rule. So I would ask that Mr. Johnson remove his sign.
All right, so basically, the rules of council are, you know, the rules of council. So it's where... So it's wherever council's prerogative is in regards to the signs. I just enforce the rules as they're stated. City attorney, you wanna weigh in?
I, I would say that, you know, his T-shirt having something on it, that's piece of clothing, that would be fine. But, but a piece of cardboard around the neck is a sign, which under the rules would fall under something that would have to be in the back of the, of the chambers. So his T-shirt, I believe, is fine for standing at the podium, but, but not the cardboard sign.
Alright, well, I think the city attorney weighed in and I believe you're not allowed to wear the sign around your neck.
Okay, so in other words, it's, I'm gonna take this off. I'm doing it under duress and I believe it's, it's a violation of my freedom of speech. So I'm taking it off, okay?
Well, thank you very much. I said, thank you very much.
Stan, you need to put it in the back. That's where the signs are supposed to be.
Okay, well, I could, I'll do it, I'll do it right now.
Please, thank you.
My name is Stan Johnson. I'm a professional engineer, formerly employed by Brevard County and the city of Titusville as a professional engineer and as a registered land surveyor. Before you, I have a number of signs that are legally posted back here. And they have to do with, they have, have to do with your budgeting, your spending of money, your errors, omissions. And what I'm gonna say is dysfunctional government. So you can see from here, we have what I mentioned for a hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion. Melt down triple X over six months, city approved sketch plat, so forth. Titusville cover up barbaric crime, spilling millions of gallons sewage, raw sewage into the Indian River and spraying people with sewage. It's a pretty serious issue. And then the nonsense we have down here, the large one, we have the seventy thousand dollar fraud, which continues today. It's, it's a, it's a document that doesn't exist, that this, well, this is something that money, it continues today. It costs, it costs the city money.
Talking about the twenty twenty-six budget.
And we're talking about the twenty twenty-six budget. And you'll notice on that, it talks about, also about unmaintained canals and flooding private property and so forth. That's expenses. These are expenses that the city should stop doing. The city doesn't answer their phone, respond to phone calls. And in this case is that I have sent to you emails dated June the twenty-fifth and July the twenty-sixth, which I started talking and asking you to return my call on these things, which have many budget items in them, budget items in them. And they, council does not respond. I have closed doors on me because council doesn't wanna answer these questions because they're embarrassing. Because what it shows is the city of Titusville is doing dirty deeds, evil, unsafe. And like I mentioned the last time I was here, is that, is that the budget, expenditures on the budget were over fifty percent on safety. These, these are issues of safety, you know, when you're talking about floodplains, violation of floodplains. And so I sent you an email also today, but here I have these two, two emails, June the twenty-fifth and July the twenty-sixth. And one of them, one of them not only goes to our, as violations, goes to our governor and our state attorney, but also it went to the FBI. So what I'm, I'm, I'm tired of it is that the city of Titusville is being dishonest, dishonorable. And as far as I'm concerned, you guys are, are, are being con artists in what you do, cause you're not telling the truth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson.
Four out of five of you. Thank you.
Alright, council discussion. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-eight twenty twenty-five, adopting the general and related budgets of the city for twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. And I would like to start discussion. Ms. Terry, how much do you anticipate we will roll over from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four was rolled into twenty twenty-five already.
Twenty-five to twenty-six.
I, I really don't know. We, we don't generally ask for that information until we get all the expenses in. We're allowed through November thirtieth. Normally it's significant. I'm gonna take a good look at it this year, but I really can't venture to, to put a dollar to it. Anything that we already have a commitment to, a contract that's ongoing, those items will roll. But outside of that, I, I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, I'm just trying to, you know, process and figure out how much leftover we're having from this past fiscal year into next fiscal year to see what legal room we do have.
I, I wouldn't wanna venture to guess right now, I'm sorry.
Alright, the reason why I bring that up is there's been some folks that have approached me, patriots, veterans in our community, that, you know, brought up a very valid point that next year is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country. And asked that we do something a little bit more special than we normally do. And I thought it was a pretty good idea. And since we're talking about budgets, I figured I'd bring it up. You know, obviously we have money typically earmarked for red, white, and boom, which I don't think that budget's changed us right about the same. But they were asking for a parade. And I thought that was a pretty good idea. And usually it costs, you know, ten, ten thousand dollars to shut down US one for a permit. For, we're talking about that with FDOT. So that might be something I believe for council to consider. I believe there's a lot of groups that would fundraise and help put on, you know, the rest of the expenses. But, you know, something I wanted to, to bring up with you guys as we talk about the budget and where our money's being spent. Council, do you have any ideas or discussion on an idea of maybe earmarking some, some dollars to help make next year even more special for our country? Member Nelson?
Well, I think there's some ideas that we could roll around, but I think probably we need to wait until after the mid-year, find out how much money we have and what demands we have for that money and then decide.
Thank you very much, member Nelson. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I think it's a, an idea we really need to pursue. And I think that we can probably get various organizations to, you know, put in floats and stuff like that. I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I agree with member Nelson that we should probably wait to see where we are. We don't need to wait too late. Is there any timeframe that anybody's thinking about yet?
Well, the Fourth of July.
So we would have the parade on Fourth of July and then end it with the fireworks, is what?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
So again, I don't think it's a fully a city lift, but I think the hard part for any nonprofit to overcome is that initial permit with FDOT. So that's where I felt maybe the city could come in and, and help out if we had some funds available.
Do you have a dollar threshold that you're looking at, sir?
I was just thinking, I mean, what's the, was it like ten thousand dollars to shut down US one?
Right now, our spend plan for the Fourth of July is we have budgeted forty thousand and we require fifty-one thousand. They just raised the price for the fireworks. What I would suggest is in January, when we kick off the planning process, we do it in advisability to council. By then we'll have some good figures on what a parade would cost and come back to you with some firmer numbers in January.
I mean, I know, I know things are going up. I mean, it's across the board, but, you know, we, we have a very, very deep veteran community here. And even FDOT's changing the colors on the Max Blue Bridge to red, white, and blue next year. So, you know, I figured we, we should probably, yeah, maybe look at stepping up our game for next year. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate you bringing it before the board. I would say, I think in Palm Bay, they're doing a celebration as well. And one of their council members is kind of leading the charge on that. So perhaps when you bring advisability, we can see how they're working in that process as well.
Thank you very much.
By January, we'll have a better idea of where we're at financially. So as we work through the audit, December is about the timeframe where we start getting all of our final numbers put together. So I'll have some, some better numbers I can give you. It won't necessarily depend on roll forward numbers. It may be that we can use some fund balance for that.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Vice Merkel?
My question is a legal one for the city attorney. If we had a committee that was working on the parade, can more than one of us work on that without it being a sunshine violation?
It would depend on how you structure it. Because remember, the only time you can't talk to each other is if something's coming to you for a vote. Okay. So if it's already been decided, you're, you're doing this and this is what resources are being done and all of your decision-making is over and it's just a matter of, of planning it as a committee.
Okay.
And there's no further council action, then it wouldn't be a, a violation. Cause it would only be a violation if there was something else coming before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Merkel. And I, Ms. Terry, I know you mentioned the, the financial audit. Who currently does our audit?
Right now, it's James Moore and Company.
Okay.
They're out of Daytona.
And who hires them and what's the process?
There is a committee that is formed. We hired them. This will be the second or third year of a contract. It goes through a committee, which is actually involves the city council. The four vice mayor was actually the chair of that committee. It is, I'm not allowed to be per Florida statutes on that committee. I solicit help from colleagues I have. So somebody from the sheriff's office came, somebody that I know from the properties office was on that committee. And also our procurement administrator was on that committee as an, in an advisory role. And so if we come together, we put it together all, we ask for RFPs and that committee is actually who decides who's gonna run our audit. So I, I really don't have any say in that.
Thank you very much for the explanation. How long is that contract for?
I believe it's for five years. Yeah, and that's the best practice by GFOA. It takes a good two years for an auditor to get very familiar with our inner workings and our numbers and how our policies work. And so it's, it's a five-year contract. I think there may be some options to renew, but that's up to the city.
Okay, thank you very much. And I had a question for HR regarding professional services. From last year to this year, it looks like a decrease of twenty-one percent professional services from a hundred and forty-two thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand. And I'm assuming that would be brokers, people to help you make decisions, correct? Night, seventy-six.
Yeah, while Terry's looking, professional services made up of our benefits consultant and our labor relations provider. That, that gives us consultations on our labor relations. So those are the two thoughts I had with, and.
And I guess my question is, why is it going down? I would anticipate it would go up. Because as we look into next year, and we've already had conversations as a council, and I know city managers had conversations about putting out an RFP for benefits consultant, for PBM, for ASO, networks, all those things. I'm assuming that's gonna cost a little bit more money.
Yes, but what you mentioned, mayor, comes out of our medical fund. So I'm just thinking what made up this, what made up that increase. And again, my thought is, is the, the professional services for our benefits consultant, labor relations, trying to think whatever.
You look at the trend, you know, it's kinda up and down, up and down.
And, and there is ten thousand. I know that the consultant helps us with our ACA, what we report our benefits information to the IRS. That also comes out of that. So just trying to think what else, what, what, what have caused that to increase as much and then come down?
Yeah, it went down by, you know, thirty thousand dollars. And my question is, why? I would imagine that number should go up.
And why did it jump so high from fifty thousand to one forty-two and then to go back down?
Right. Again, I'm, I'm thinking of what makes up that professional services and.
Mayor, we can come back with a complete accounting of that if you'd like. Now we can send one of our accounting personnel to dig that number up for you.
I just, my, my concern is if we go out to bid for a new benefits broker and, you know, maybe there's somebody we want, but we don't have it budgeted for, is, is just my concern. Because, you know, these things are increasing in price, not decreasing in price. So.
Yeah, and, and to that point, mayor, you know, the, the fifty thousand or so, as I recall, for our benefits consultant should not exceed that amount. You know, there's no commissions paid to that. It's a, it's a fixed rate for the benefits consultant, so. But we could detail that, you know, provide some detail for you.
Mayor, I can have, I can have someone run a full accounting of this account number for you that would show all, and this is a revised budget. I'd have to see what the original budget was for last year. Let me look that up real quick.
Yeah, that's the thing is if the revised budget, you guys, you know, we ended up having to spend a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. And, you know, now we're expecting it to go down. I would imagine it wouldn't go down.
Yeah, it looks like the original adopted budget was one oh eight, three fifty. So something had to have happened that required additional funds. I'm, I'm not familiar without looking at it again exactly what that is, but I can get that for you.
And, and I'm not judging the fact that it costs more, like I get it. I'm just saying if we're not planning for, you know, another increase, you know.
No, you're, you're exactly right. There shouldn't be a, a large increase.
Mayor?
Uh, member Stokel?
Yeah, I think I would like to know, just because it is in some of these others. So for instance, in community relations, it went down. Purchasing didn't have any professional services. And then HR, it went down. And then finance, it's around the same at twenty thousand. Customer service is three. And then support services is our highest one at two oh five. So I, I think it would be good just for us to know why, what's the discrepancy even between the departments and what it's being spent on.
I can certainly provide that to you.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, and I also had a question on, it's page eighty, for the economic development. In twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and then it goes up to two hundred and forty-four thousand. And so I was just curious what that encompasses as well. So a breakdown of this, like I think these kind of stand out. I think that would have been helpful and I'm sorry I didn't ask this question sooner.
So would you please say it again, which the numbers are that you're comparing?
Sure, it's on page eighty, if you look at the professional services. So the actual in twenty twenty-three is one twenty-nine. Then if you go to the proposed budget, say for twenty twenty-six, it's two hundred and thirty-two thousand. And I don't know if that's including a salary or we hired somebody.
Well, one of the things I want you to remember as you're looking at this, this is a budget number. And the prior two years for twenty-three and twenty-four are actuals. So we don't really put the actual numbers in here. The budget you're looking at for HR is the budget. So I'll have to look to see what the actuals are right now. But there were a couple of special council directives, I believe, for economic development that increased these numbers significantly for these years. And I'd have to either rely on Mandy or someone to tell you what those are. I believe that they were council directives though, and we amended the budget for those.
Those are consulting fees, I think, for Kim Lee Horn and some other, for economic development.
Okay. Is it possible when we get this to have a little bit more of a breakdown? I know that you gave it to me for a few of the departments, cause I know it is a lot. But is that possible, just that we can have a little bit?
For the actuals, you mean, as far as the activity goes? Yes, I can give you more information than you want.
Thank you.
So I believe, you know, when member Moscoso was talking about economic development, the eighty-nine thousand that's budgeted, I believe that is for marketing alliance in terms of, that would fall under promotional activities, right? Not professional services?
No, marketing is under the, is under the promotional activities.
Okay.
Somewhat. It depends on where they put it at. The department builds this part of their budget. And sometimes if I find things that are completely out of line, I'll change it. But otherwise, they kinda know what it is they're doing with the money. I would say most of it would be in professional activities, but promotional activities, but some of it could be. It just depends on how they plan to spend it.
Like maybe the fee we're paying to marketing alliance is professional services, but the dollars they spend on advertising is promotional.
Yes, yes.
I understand that, just when you, you look at promotional and you know that we spent eighty-nine thousand dollars with them. When you see eighty-nine thousand dollars budget, that's, you know, why your, your brain goes that way. Mr. Parrish, did you have something? Mr. Parrish, did you have something? I saw your light up, but I don't think he's here. Okay.
I was just confirming what you all stated, that it's budgeted in professional services.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know, right? Or sound like him. But it would be my recommendation if we, you know, maybe allocate a little bit more money in the professional services for HR, for benefits consultant. You know, I know Joe mentioned it's $50,000, it's flat, take it or leave it for benefits consultant. But, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for. And if you guys, you know, notice, we're struggling in that department right now. So I would like to have some money available so we can have the best possible person giving us the direction. And I'm not saying we're going to spend it, because there's various different ways to craft an RFP where you could align all the dollars being spent. A very good example of that is you could pay a base consulting fee each year for a consultant to actively work, you know, 24/7 to give us the best advice at like, you know, $50,000, right, which we have budgeted for. And then do a percentage of savings to align everybody's goals. Because unfortunately, sometimes in the insurance world, the more things cost, sometimes the more people make. Especially when you talk about commission. And I know Joe's gonna say, they don't make commission, I get that. But, you know, that's something that I'm thinking about as we're moving forward, so that we can get the best bang for buck out of that. Because when it's our second biggest line item next to payroll, that is, you know, where dollars are at, so.
So can I ask how much it is you're thinking that you want to add to that budget?
I mean, if we're budgeting $50,000, because that number doesn't just make up a benefits consultant, right? It makes up the labor services and unions, and we're going through that right now. So that's going to cost a little bit more money as well, right? Because that's my concern when I see this number go down, right?
Not so much right now. But in the event that we get beyond, you know, get into an impasse situation, but for the collective bargaining process, we're doing that inhale, so.
So Mayor, Council, there, you have a couple of options right now. We do build in some contingency funds into the next year's budget in case something comes up that we actually need the funds for. Those are by the city manager, at the city manager's discretion. Of course, if it's something that you need, he can authorize that if you go through a vote and decide that's how you want to spend it. Also, this is a significant amount of money for his line. I know it doesn't seem like enough. I think it would be enough to get him started into the fiscal year, and then perhaps it could be something we could address at mid-year. So you have some options for that, other than if you decide you want to add some money to this budget, you just need to tell me what we're taking out.
Okay. Well, I very much appreciate that. And I believe this budget also included an additional staff member in community relations, correct? This proposed budget?
That's correct, but I haven't made a decision whether to.
Okay, I'm just, I got you. So, you know, like you said, there is some flexibility. But, you know, again, I want to make sure we provide every ounce of support we can to make sure we get the benefits shored up and correct. So again, when I saw the professional services go down, that was my concern, right? Is I want to make sure you guys have the funds to get it done. So any other discussion from council on this item? Anybody want to make any changes to the professional services, just kind of leave it alone right now? All right. Well, in that case, I do have one last question, and that's around the organization. And maybe Attorney Stokes can help answer this question. Is when we pass this budget and adopt it the way it is, are we approving the organizational chart as well?
The organizational chart is there primarily as a justification for the dollar amounts and the line items that are there. But the organization itself is all within the purview of the city manager. And I apologize for not getting back to you on this, but I did do the research. And, you know, whether positions, what positions are put into place, whatever, all fall within his discretion once the budget's approved. So the organizational chart that's in there is just to justify the dollar amount. But he then has the flexibility to make changes and all that. And once it's approved in the budget, then it's, you know, it's his to deal with operationally. That's the way the council manager form of government works, so.
Thank you very much, City Manager. So how do we reconcile that with Article 2, Section 15, powers four of city council to establish new departments and redistribute the work within?
Well, establishing the departments is clearly one of your functions. But how those departments are staffed fall under his purview, so.
I just think it's an interesting question.
And where that normally comes up is if something's going to be outsourced, you know, outsourcing certain departments to the private sector or to other governmental agencies. Yeah, that would fall clearly with council to decide. But once you establish a public works department, a police department, a fire department, then the staffing of that falls to him, so.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Stokel?
Yeah, just to reiterate with that, I think it's under, we set policy. So if we were to pass a policy that we at the city were going to provide a certain service or whatnot, we can do that, but then it's up to the city manager to decide how is that implemented and how do we do that. And I will say, the org charts, one of the classes I teach is public budgeting. And a lot of budgets don't even include an org chart within their budget. So I do appreciate us doing that for transparency purposes. But, yeah, I feel like policy is what we really need to focus on. And then we set that, and then we have to allow our city manager to decide how to implement that.
Completely agree, and I appreciate that. The challenge I have with the org chart, and which I wanted to bring up while we're talking about the budget, because it's in the budget, is according to our charter, we appoint the city auditor. So with that being said, how the org chart is laid out, with the city auditor reporting directly to the person they are auditing, the city manager, I think is an inherent conflict and something that should be discussed amongst council. So I'm not necessarily saying it has to be like right now. Obviously, it's not part of this ordinance, but it is something.
I think you're, Mayor, I think you're confusing the auditors. The internal auditor is appointed by the city manager. The external auditing firm is appointed by council. I believe that's what you're referring to.
There's actually two sections in the charter that reference an auditor. The first one is under powers of council, Article 2, Section 15, Number 6. It says, appoint city auditor. Later on in the charter, Section 27, I believe it is, talks about council hiring an external auditor, which is two separate sections. By the way, we can appoint a city auditor, we can't remove them, though. Because it uses the same language as appoint city manager, appoint city attorney, appoint city auditor.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what was the section you referenced in the charter?
Section 15.
I mean, it, it does say appoint city auditor, and that's not uncommon. There are some, I mean, you look at Gainesville, they have like eight charter officers, because they have the utility department, they have an internal auditor, they have a bunch of others. The way, I think the way, the reason this was always is that this list says city manager, city attorney, but then there are subsections later that talks about it, whereas the subsection here talks about external. But this is open to interpretation, and having looked at it just now for the first time, I would say it does appear that there is power for the council to have an auditor that would report to the council, which is not uncommon. That's very common, having some sort of internal auditor or inspector general that reports to the council. Because as, Mayor, as you said, to have the auditor, who's basically the watchdog, reporting to the person they're watching is kind of inconsistent. So that's why, that's why charters are usually set up to have that auditor report directly back to council. So a lot of this is, you know, shooting from the hip, because I haven't delved into this. And I certainly would have no problem coming back with something more definite. But looking at this just at first glance, it looks like you appoint an auditor.
Thank you very much.
And it's not qualified internal or external, it's just as you appoint the auditor.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. And that's, you know, part of the reason why I wanted to just clarify things and, you know, why I asked for a charter review way back when, because it is ambiguous in some areas. And I want to make sure that, you know, everybody knows what's going on. Personally, I think council's easiest way to do things is just to have a city auditor maybe report directly to the city attorney and not necessarily the city manager, but that it would be probably the easiest way to do that. And again, it doesn't have to be done now, but because we're having the discussion, I figured I'd let you guys know where I was going with it. Any Fortune 100 company, any publicly traded company, the hospital board, which is a government entity, they have an internal audit committee that the board member sits on and reports back to the rest of the board. So that is another option, where you could have one of us, maybe the vice mayor, you know, say, hey, you meet with the internal auditor once before every meeting, and then report back to the board if there's anything that needs to be made aware of. But those would be my recommendations. And again, it is nothing against Tom. Tom's doing an absolutely amazing job. I just look at structurally, organizationally, how we're set up for success long-term. So, Member Stokel?
Yep. No, I'm definitely open to that. I think, too, just thinking through it, I don't know what it would look like organizationally, whether it stays to the city manager's, does, reports to us or to the city attorney. I think I just would want more information regardless of who it is appointed to, because honestly, I don't know what findings are of internal audits. And then the second component would be, which is what I think it is right now and how I would want it to remain, is the point of internal auditing is to make sure we're doing everything correctly, and then to make sure we're catching ourselves. Not a gotcha moment, but hey, in case we get audited. For instance, when I had to get approval from you guys for travel, it's, oh, we have this rule. Let me make sure I have the documentation. So I think that we as a board need to be aware of it, regardless of who it's appointing to, to make sure that we are in compliance. Should questions arise, should DOGE come about even more so? I think that would be important.
The last thing we want is, you know, to be caught off guard. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I've been on the audit committee at, committee at Parish Medical Center for a number of years. And the auditor, the audit committee is made up of board members. And the auditor finals audit is reported to us, the board members. And then the audit committee reports to the board. So I'm not sure if, if George McCarren actually gets an outbrief from the auditor. I think he gets the outbrief at the board meeting after we have heard the auditor. And the auditor has told us what his findings are, not the findings that he didn't have. So that could be a method we could look at. And I noticed when you mentioned something about the, I don't know if it was the review of the RFP or whether it was the actual audit, but you mentioned that the vice mayor was on it. Was that the RFP, or was that the actual audit?
It was, it was the whole process.
The whole process.
Yes, they reviewed the RFPs that we received back from all the audit firms. And then as a committee, he was the chair. And it, somebody from the city council has to, per Florida statutes, be on that committee. It can be made up of at least three people. And so he was the chair of that committee, and they decided and reviewed the RFPs along with me. And so I just served as an advisory. I can look the Florida statute up for you, where this happened maybe five years ago, that the statute, the state determined that I could no longer, internal employees could no longer choose their external auditors. It had to be a separate committee. And so that's why I reached out to my colleagues at the sheriff's department and the property appraiser's office. It also does say that at least one member of the city council needs to serve on that committee, and he volunteered to do that.
Okay, so, you know, I would think that if the, if the charter is ambiguous on that, I think we, as a council, can make that decision that if we have an audit committee, which I don't have a problem serving on, as an audit committee, we would report back to the city council on whatever findings that were made. I think, I'm thinking, City Attorney, that that's a decision that we can make, right?
Well, I, I think it, I think it is, but I think we need to be conscientious of the two different types of audits, the annual audit versus an internal auditor.
I'm not talking about the, yeah, I'm talking about the annual.
Yeah, yeah, the annual audit, you're absolutely right. You know, the purpose of an internal auditor, obviously.
Yeah, internal is very different, yeah.
Day-to-day type thing.
Yeah. Okay.
Vice Mayor Cole, may I?
Do you want to make a motion?
May I, Vice Mayor Cole?
You may.
I believe per the charter, council determines who the external auditor is supposed to be.
Sir, yes, you do. So what happens is, once that committee comes together, they bring a recommendation and a contract. And then the city council does vote on that.
Yeah, so we collectively decide the external. But again, the internal, the day-to-day, you know, because that's what you serve on, right? You don't serve on the external audit at Parish. You serve on the internal audit committee that doesn't involve George, correct?
No, I serve on the external audit committee, and that's the way it's structured, that we, as an audit committee, the auditor reports to us in January of every year.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that the hospital is probably more the external component. My suggestion would be that maybe at our next council meeting, bring it up under the reports to get advisability, and then we can kind of explore what the best option would be.
You know, we were talking about budgets and org charts. I figured I'd bring it up and have a quick discussion. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? All right, so I believe there was a motion and a second for this budget. We had a lot of good discussion, but no changes were made, which is perfectly fine. I'm just recapping, because it's been a while. City Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, City Attorney.
Ordinance number 29-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 21-241 and 21-243 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and increasing the schedule of rates and charges for water and sewer service, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk?
Oh, we have one card, it's Dan Johnston.
She called your name?
Stan Johnston, I'm opposed to this. In fact, there's, there's budgeting items that have been with water and sewer for many years, and they may now have been some in public works. But all of these eight signs, all of them, all of them have to do with water and sewer. And so this is an important issue. And notice, one of the things has to do with a picture of a dam. And what the city has done, they spent over a million dollars on these particular two dams at the senior center, and they're all illegal. They're all illegal because they, they do not have compensatory storage. They do not have surveying information on the, on the taking of public property by flooding and by increasing of wetlands. So what are they doing is, right now, is that against law, you guys are violating our constitution, taking of property without due process. That's constitutional law. And we have more than one dam. In fact, in that area, we have, if you look at the FEMA, FEMA Gate, FEMA Gate has a drawing that shows in that area the city of Titusville constructed, not one, not two, five dams. Five dams. Five dams. Do you know how many times FEMA was contacted when they were designed and built? None. And all of those are illegal in what I just told you. Now, what you just mentioned about the auditing, that would be interesting, because one of these has to do with a $70,000 fraud. And in that case, that was in 2019, and the city council discussed it and said $70,000 was spent on investigating me and my emails. And the city paid $70,000 for a report. However, when I did a request for public records, when I did a request for public records, when I did a request for public records, that's three times I mention this, is because finance says $70,000 did not exist. Sarah Stokel was there, and also Attorney Nelson was there. And it continues today. So that's a problem in the audit, dishonesty by the city of Titusville. It's ugly. It's ugly. It's really ugly, what the city has done. It's all lies. It's all lies. And so, so there is no, there is no report. I did a public records, doesn't exist.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
City ignores it. So, no thank you to the council.
City Clerk?
No, I'm hard.
Oh, sorry. Can I have a motion?
We have one. I believe we're on the general related budgets.
Water and sewer.
I'm sorry, water and sewer. Move to approve ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, City Attorney.
Ordinance number three-zero dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Section Sixteen dash one-one-six of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste, recycling, and additional cart fees, and by amending Section One-Six dash one-one-seven of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees, and by amending Section Sixteen dash one-one-eight of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase in the extra charges for special services, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk?
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I sent you an email today, and you have a copy of that. It's dated September the eighteenth, and it mentions about, I'll just give you the title of it. Title says, my dissatisfaction, that's me, my dissatisfaction in opposition to city's twenty-twenty-six budget tax and budget. And then in parentheses on the title, it says, errors, emissions, dishonesty, closed doors, and city's failure to respond, beginning in, this goes back to nineteen and eighty-five, nineteen and eighty-five.
Mr. Johnson, please get on topic. We're talking about the twenty-twenty-six solid waste service charges.
I want you to notice is that when I was reading the title, this has to do with, I'm reading the title of it, it says twenty-twenty-six budget and tax budget. That's exactly how it's advertised in the newspaper. So, so that's talking about this, this.
Pardon? That's not what we're talking about.
I'm talking about the tax and budget. Okay, I'm just giving you a title now, and I don't appreciate being interrupted, but in this case is that I'm going to say is that, is that, is that when I talk about four or five council members, and when I talk about other people, it excludes this Mrs. Moscoso, and it excludes Mr. Abadi. You're excluded. From, from being in the dirty deeds, okay? So, and that's saying, so anyhow, I made a mistake the last time I spoke on this, is that I'm going to say what Ken Rosa had said and what I've said in the past. Solid waste is what? It's done very well, but there's one particular person here that has managed solid waste fantastically. And I would detto on what Kevin Rosa said the last, at the last meeting. So, he didn't mention any names. I don't know if I should mention any names, but there's a Mr. Cook who is, who's in charge of that, and I think he's done a fantastic job. So, let's try not to fire him, okay? Now, but in this, I also have a, this letter of July twenty-sixth, it talks about these, these dirty deeds that the city has done, and I mentioned that in, in this letter that I just sent today. Notice something I did on this. How did I close it? You're not going to like how I closed it. I said, you are in my prayers. Love never fails. You guys need to, what you need to do, the four or five, not you, do need to repent of this dirty deeds that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Can I have a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance number thirty-dash twenty-two-five, amending the Code of Ordinances by increasing the solid waste service charges and rates.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. City Attorney?
Ordinance number three-one dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budgets for the city of Titusville for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnson. I sent you an email today, and one, one of the council members commented, that received it. I don't know whether the person read it, but anyhow, I have this email sent to you, I want to, today, that I wrote down, you know, you're in my prayers. So, I'm going to read the last paragraph in this, that you have, you have a copy of it, and I don't think.
I'm going to caution you to stay on topic.
Okay, here's, I'm going to read it to you. And I read you the title. Actually, I didn't finish reading the title. It said, beginning in nineteen eighty-five with city's approval of the outrageously erroneous nineteen eighty-five freshwater management study that continues today. So, in this email, I talk specifically about, about, I think there's over ten problems that I'm mentioning, including the sewage spill and spraying people with sewage. So, here's what I finally.
Mr. Johnson, please have a seat. You forfeit the rest of your time for not being on topic. Thank you. Please have a seat. I already officially cautioned you.
This is budgeting?
No, we're talking about capital expenditures for twenty-twenty-six. Please have a seat.
Okay, the dam is a budget. I'm a million dollars budgeting.
Please have a seat.
And I can't talk about.
You can talk about it during public comment, all you want.
I'm sitting down under duress.
Thank you. All right, so we called the cards. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, adopting the enterprise funds and capital improvement programs for twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the team. Appreciate everything you guys have done. I know it's tough going through the budgeting process and then, yeah, us asking you questions.
Petitions or requests?
I know. I'm just talking about because we finished that section. So, again, I really do appreciate everything you guys do. Now, we move on.
Mayor, I want to also commend finance and the entire staff. Also, one item that we overlooked, and I think it's important to note, that we are retiring the riverfront bonds this year. So, in addition to having the lowest millage in seventeen years, you're going to have point one-nine mils less on your tax roll this year. So, that's another, add a little bonus, but that, that debt is now gone. So, all that property is ours in perpetuity.
So, if you added that in, we'd technically be less than rollback? Are pretty close?
I can't do that math in my head.
I was trying. That's why I was asking the finance person.
I don't even bring a calculator, so.
You know, it was interesting. I was talking with the state elected official today, and I was telling him about our budget and where we are, and he's like, so you're partial rollback? And I go, what does that mean? He's like, well, you lowered your millage. And I was like, yeah, but we got to tell everybody it's a tax increase. He's like, partial rollback? I'm like, you're the one that wrote the law that we have to read it this way, you know? So, I can't sell it as a partial rollback like you can, but we have to verbatim read it that it's a one-point-nine percent increase. So, anyways, I thought that was ironic. All right, anything else? All right. Petitions or requests from the public, non-agenda items. Mr. Johnson, would you like the floor?
I think it says you're supposed to speak on this particular.
Well, it's petitions and requests from the public, so, yeah, you can talk on it. Oh, yeah, sorry. Petitions, I apologize. I'm used to saying non-agenda items. I forgot this is a special meeting. Yes, comments must be directly related to this meeting.
Okay, all right. The email I sent to you, I'm going to read the last paragraph, and it has to do with the budget and what you guys are doing. It says, city is unable to dispute my findings of outrageous errors and dirty deeds, and this has been going on for many years. Why do these sins happen, or they're dirty deeds? Why does city have closed doors? They don't respond, just like the seventy thousand dollars, and failure to respond. It's just like the emails of June the twenty-fifth and July the twenty-sixth. That's been over two months, and I've called, I've called your number to be transferred from Mrs. Matthews for over two months now, every day. Why does city hide the truth with cover-ups by wild excuses, arrogance, closed doors, and numerous lies? Why does and how can council approve such nonsense? Why doesn't city admit to errors and seek repentance?
Mr. Johnson, you're cautioned, stay on topic about the meeting.
This is very much, this, this email is very much on topic. It is even titled from the topic. My finding of today's council nonsense can be described as unhealthy, unethical alliance by four out of five council members to hide errors and truths of horrible decisions and city, city's dirty deeds by dysfunctional dishonest city government. Unfortunately, it appears that some council members are very successful as con artists and shysters, unwilling to confess of their and city's errors and unwilling to seek repentance.
All right, Mr. Johnson.
You're in my prayers.
I cautioned you. You forfeit the rest of your time. Please have a seat. It's not about the meeting.
I have to sit down?
Yes.
And I'm going, I close it with love never fails.
I appreciate you.
And the thing is, is that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
We're supposed to love one another, and you're not doing it. You're violating the golden rule and all these things you're doing. And I'm, I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Sitting down under duress.
Thank you. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.